...started. If it builds up in here too much, we're gonna have to go across the hall, okay?
That's what we're discussing right now, so y'all know what we're discussing, just about the capacity of the people in here.
Hey Ronnie. So welcome to Commissioner's support. We're gonna start with road call, Commissioner Yarrow.
Here.
Commissioner Rosales.
Yeah.
Jeff Shaw's here, Commissioner Juke Snott here, Commissioner Schindel.
Here.
And Lisa Lando, Lando with the County clerk's office.
Here.
Please stand and join us in open clarity. Heavenly Father, we ask for your guidance today that you be here with us as we're speaking about issues that affect our community. We ask that you be with us in the heavy traffic, and we also ask that you be with our troops, wherever they may be. In your name we pray. Amen.
To the light of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number five on the agenda is a discussion and presentation of disposition of discarded building materials located in County Road 326, also known as the Walker's Crossing County Bridge area. We put that on the agenda, as everybody knows, there's been, or the people in this room know that there's been a little, I guess, controversy over some building, discarded building materials dumped at what we call the Walker's Crossing Bridge, but it's actually County Road 326. But those of you that are from here, and somebody always called it, and I know Jeff is in here, Jeff, you wanna come up here?
Yes.
I guess Jeff, what we're trying to figure out is if you just wanna tell us how the project at 326 started, or what's going on, and give us a start, and kinda work us up to where we're at, or why we're here.
Okay, well, a few years ago, Tex, on the bridge, says that we have to close in, around the footing of the bridge, all that needs to be closed in before the bridge will become dim and closed. We started the process of taking that bridge and doing the minor repairs to it that needs to be done to it, and a gentleman from the, they was tearing that hospital down, and I got, gave him a call and asked him for the material and stuff, and asked for the, you know, everything that's clean and stuff, and they said, yeah, it's clean, it's been cleaned, and all the abatement's been done on it, so we started hauling it in. The first kilos we got weren't bad, but then a bunch of it got hauled in, that was bad material, and we were told to stop it, so we stopped it by the river port thing, that's right here, two gents are right here. We did stop it. I did some testing on it today for them, we dug, what, fifteen, sixteen holes, something like that, and that's all clean, so they're satisfied with that. We got a couple of truckloads of it that was put in on the edge of the river, and that'll be coming out as soon as we get a chance to have it cleaned up.
What kind of testing do you do today?
Dug around on the riverbanks, they wanted to see how far it's in there and stuff, you know, went up against the river, and just dug test holes where they wanted them. Yes, sir.
It was like two or three foot test hole, pretty good.
So, when the hospital demolition started, you contacted them?
Yes.
To see if you could get some of the materials?
The brick, the clean bricks and stuff, that's for reinforcement around that bridge. And then after we get the container wall built, where it holds equipment, then they can start putting the big pieces into the water, the big chunks of concrete, where it reinforced the wall, and then come in on top and put more, put rock on top, and reinforce it all, and stabilize that so the water hits the concrete and not, because you put dirt in there, it's not gonna stay in washway.
Did you look at the steel? Did you look at the material, see all the steel in?
Yeah, when you went, when you went and looked at the pile there, at the hospital, it looked good. Matter of fact, me and Ronnie drove out today and looked at it, and he said, it don't look bad. It don't look bad in the pile, but when you start spreading it out, it does look bad.
Did y'all find any, have any stuff in the tests that y'all ran today?
No, no, it's that hole that we dug, no, it's not there. I showed them, you can see where the material is at, right on the edge.
Jeff brought me some stuff. I brought it to y'all because I want to make conversation with you all. Jeff said he was getting, I guess, a lot of phone calls about the debris being put in there and stuff, and about asbestos?
Yes. I'll give you a fake word on that.
Maybe you wanna tell them what you brought me, Jeff?
Yes, there's no asbestos in it, there's no lead in it. It's clean. And years ago, the hospital was clean for, I don't know who around here, when they cleaned that hospital that time, when they were gonna put mentally ill kids in there, and that sometime.
Twenty-five, twenty-three years ago?
Yeah, and that hospital was clean back then of all the lint and stuff out of it, so it's, it was clean at that time, and then they got abatement on it, and cleaned it again, so it's, it's clean. The only thing it's got is, it's got pieces of little roofing, and then insulation, and that's in the dirt, and that was all supposed to be clean dirt, and it's not.
Well, I was called by, I was called by some citizens, concerned citizens, and told me to, you know, check into it and do what I had to do, so I went out there and I met with Mr. Hernandez, from the San Antonio River Authority, went out there, and I spent some time out there, checked out the test holes. The test holes came out all pretty clean, the top of it, it maybe have half an inch, inch of debris where it got stomped in and stuff, and I kinda questioned him, how, you know, what do we have to do, the procedures we have to go about? They said basically just pick it up, remove it, and it would be done, it would be done with. The only concern that I had, and I talked to Mr. Beatrix, is about what's on the riverbank. I believe we have to get like maybe an excavator to get in there and pull it out, so I think it would be dangerous for one of the, one of the guys to do it, and I wouldn't agree with that, but besides that, I spent time out there, and it seems like it could be cleaned up with pretty, the top piece, I think y'all started it today.
The top's all clean, yes.
And Mr. Beatrix telling me that he's already talked with the contractors, and the contractors are gonna bring their trucks back, and get them to load them back up?
Yeah, we just kinda talked to them, and I said, that's probably what's gonna start happening, we're gonna have to clean the debris up. But I talked to Ronnie, and there's some, a lot of the big pieces of stuff is in there that we could pull out of the piles and use it for reinforcement, but taking out the iron off of it and stuff, and he said, I'll be fine, it'll be used if we, you know, need the material to fulfill and stuff. And then we have this other outer stuff over here that come out of the gym, the bricks and stuff, and mix the products together to build a wall where it'll hold before we put our big stuff in there that where it won't wash out.
And, do you know what, the contractors are gonna take a pickup out there, or take?
No, we're still, we're gonna talk to them about it, so, see what happens in all this, you know. But we will start going through the, through the stuff, you know, and you know, like, that's the big pieces of concrete that we actually need, we can use, that'll be less to haul off. But they said the clean material we can use, but just can't use the dirt.
I think that I would have to do just off of each other.
Absolutely.
I think we need to get rid of a lot of the steel, a lot of that wood.
Yes.
I, I wouldn't wanna see it out there, so I can understand.
Yeah, no, that's not gonna go in there, just, just clean material, the brick and the concrete. But we have to find a way to stabilize those, those lakes.
Did I understand you? You said the contractor with the hospital was gonna haul this stuff off if you loaded it?
Yeah, we're gonna talk to them about it, we gotta get rid of it.
Did you have any written agreement with them to start with?
No, sir.
Just a verbal agreement?
Yes, sir.
I think that's all the information I did go, because the people did call me, I had my meetings, I did, you know, go out there and check it on my part, and I think that's all the information I have, I don't know, because they went out there, I went out there and met with them, they said, clean it up, take it up, clean it up, all the way.
We're not hiding nothing out there, you can see what's there, and clean it up, it ain't gonna take that much to clean it up, get it cleaned up.
But is it gonna be safe to put the rest of that stuff down in that river?
What, the concrete?
Or we need to put clean rock or something in there? That concrete and all that other stuff, is it gonna be safe?
Yeah, there's header walls in the, you know, the hospitals, but they ain't got nothing there, clean concrete, then we got some concrete that come off the bridge, header walls and stuff.
These pieces here agreed to?
Yes.
You all right?
Yes, sir.
You're not gonna get us in trouble?
Can I say something?
Yes.
The material that Mr. Beatrix and I looked at, at the hospital site, they were pretty large chunks of concrete, obviously it was foundation material that, and I was wanting consensus from this group, with the perception of the hospital, it's not very popular right now, the consensus from this group possibly use some of that material, concrete, without the rebar, if that's okay with this group?
I think what TC, and we can't make a decision, because there's no decision making on the agenda today, it's just discussion and presentation, but I think it's whatever, San Antonio River Authority and TCEQ, which is the enforcement agency, and I did talk to both of, two people at TCEQ, and they said that the inertium product could be used with your approval, and that would, but that doesn't, I think caused the, the concern was the rebar, the lumber, the concern of the asbestos.
Yeah, that, that stuff certainly cannot go in there. Most of the piles that are placed along the county road need to go to the landfill. There are some pretty good sized chunks of concrete in there that could be used, but again, it's, it's part of the hospital, you know, the perception there.
So it's best to remove it all and take it up? That'd be the best thing to do?
I, I think it would be more labor intensive to clean those piles out the way that we are, if, if we could find, and Mr. Beatrix showed me areas where there's plenty of concrete trunks that I think with some rebar that can be removed, that can be used at the site.
And that's, you and Jeffrey can get together and work on that.
What we also did today was I asked Mr. Hernandez if he could take a look at some concrete that we have over here at the end of Calvert Street?
Yes.
And when Jeff was there, so I told Jeff, but I, either I'll go, he go, Jeff said he would go with him, and I believe that that concrete's okay to use alone, 'cause it's clean concrete. I mean, it has rebars, you're gonna have to cut the rebar.
It looks like it's been there, it's been weathered a little bit.
Right.
And it didn't mix with any other material.
Okay. Wanted, just to make sure that, you know, y'all, since you were here, you could clear that one, you know, that we, that he could use that out there.
And Dr. Kimble's gonna want us to clean that up?
Yes, of course.
He promised him, he promised him, he promised him, so I think we need to.
And then the top saw, all the saw that's, Mr. Kimble saw, so that's there, the grass grown out and stuff, I wanna use some of that product to, you know, fill in the gaps and holes in the brick in between the big chunks of concrete and stuff, where when the weather and the floods comes, it, it'll up against it, it won't wash out.
Yeah, and I've talked to Mr. Beatrix already, and he said within the next week or two, they should start moving that out here on Calvert Street, right?
Yeah.
And that was decent material that the county can use?
Yes.
Which is leaving?
I also wanted to point to y'all an email that was in the package, somebody had said something to me about a press release, or a letter from TCEQ, and this is it. We never, I think one of the things that I'd like to point out right now is we were never cited by the River Authority or by TCEQ, we never received a violation, so I didn't know what everybody was talking about, that's why I asked Jeff to come tonight and tell us all together, because I don't know. But I did get this email, and it just says, Rick Shaw, as I mentioned in our phone conversation earlier, San Antonio River Authority did not release a letter or a press release, but I saw Joe Baker last night at the documentary film showing, and told him we're aware of the situation, and we're working with our partner, Karnes County, on the issue, and that the cleanup will begin Monday morning. I believe Jeff was the one that told me, he was told then that the cleanup would begin Monday morning when I got here.
Pretty early this morning, yes.
And it said, this is what we gave Joe last night, and we also gave it to Steve at Campbell Radio this morning. On May 7th, 2013, the San Antonio River Authority learned of a large amount of debris in the floodplain and on the banks of the San Antonio River underneath County Road 326 in Kennedy, located in Karnes County. Sarah's environmental investigator met with county officials, but it was reported that material from a demolished hospital building was being used to stabilize the banks of the river to prevent erosion at the foot of the bridge. The material consists of rebar, lumber, roofing tar paper, pipes, electrical wire, insulation, file-based sport, and other materials. This could have become a flooding hazard and a water quality hazard. The San Antonio River Authority is working with Karnes County and the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality to ensure the material would be removed and disposed of property. County officials told Sarah the cleanup will begin Monday, May 13th, 2013. And that's all that it said. So that's all the information that I have to use, this, what I got from Roseanne Hughes for the debris removal, and these packed packages that I got from Joe. About the abatement demolition form. That's all I have to give you, if I have anything else to give you, everything else is from the law, what you want.
Ron, have you been in touch with someone from TCEQ?
Yes, I have.
Have they been on the site?
Yes, they have, have not come out to the site. I did forward photographs and pictures to the agency, so they, they are aware of.
TCEQ, contact us. Do you wanna have a question?
I spoke to them, too.
So is there any other, I know Jeff keep going approach, the city of Kennedy is fixing to demolish some basketball goals, not like the city park, would that concrete be available to be used for this project also?
I think he has plenty of Dr. Kimble's that we need to move.
I'm ready.
No?
I'll make a hole, we gotta pick.
So that's something you can look at, you can contact them.
Yeah, we'll.
Yeah, let's get this done first.
We're gonna get rid of that one first over here.
Yes.
Yes.
But yes, I don't see why, a basketball goal like that, that has nothing in it, it's just concrete with rebars, just three eights in there or something, so it's.
And all we gotta cut it, three inches of all the concrete.
And that's good fill, right?
It's good fill.
Does anybody have any questions they wanna ask Jeff?
Well, this was all done with, I'm gonna tell y'all, trying to save money for the county, but you start trucking stuff from Marble Falls and down here, and start trucking big boulders in there to try to support the river, you're fixing to spend a lot of money. And that's why we're, our intention is for it to try to save the county some money. We will get it cleaned up once there, and I think we'll be all right on the situation that, that happened, but there was, I've heard of stories that were doing it intentionally, that's nothing intentionally done. When I read that they worked, you know, stated it's a clean product to use, how clean, but it wasn't clean enough, and I understand, we quit, and finish up what we need to do, and then continue the project.
Have y'all already started moving some stuff out of there yet?
From the top side I did, I took a.
The bottom side leave a lot?
Yes, sir.
And I kinda did this backwards, I did citizens be heard at the end, because, not because I did citizens be heard at the end if we need to close anything or do anything else like that, but that way everybody could hear Jeff's explanation prior to hearing what was gonna be done, or it's gonna kinda come out backwards, it wasn't gonna come out, so. Does anybody have any questions they wanna ask Jeff before we move on to the citizens? Robbie, can I get you to citizens? You wanna talk to them?
Well, of course, I have to go.
Did you sign? Did you sign it? Anybody that wants to talk, if you haven't ever been here before, I need you to do a sign-in sheet for me, and that's anybody that wants to do it. Will you come do one for me, Bobby? Anybody else back there wanna talk? Oh, you're here, and I was talking about.
Go ahead, talk. I'm equal, I'm here.
But it was nice, though.
Yeah, it's alright, just the truth's truth.
Same sheet, Roger.
Yes. Right there, Ellen, right there, hey. Uh-huh. Just get your, if you should get your name on it, we only have one item on the agenda, so we know where you're going with it.
Okay.
Robbie, wanna come back? Wanna come back in?
Gentlemen over here?
Yes, Ron, number six, please.
Don, my concern is, my main concern for the chain of custody of asbestos, the analyticals before it was debated, the analyticals after it was debated, manifest of delivered asbestos to a landfill, a nominable landfill, and why we're disposing on material on 326. Another question or comment, I was told at the river bridge when I, when I first called Ron, that this was on the advice, so, this is construction, putting this out there like that. Don don't do it like that. We're downstream from all this material, my father-in-law done one on his place, we swim in the river, we fish in the river, I've asked Jeff twice, gone to his office, Jeff, stop putting this stuff in the river, it's nasty, it's contaminated, it does not look good in the river. First time it blew me off. Okay. Second time I went back in his office, Mr. Lucky was there, Homer was there, I said, Jeff, how long are you gonna keep pushing this stuff into the river? And I quote, "I will push it into the river until I am done." Well, I walked out, I made a phone call, and I'm done. That's enough, you know, we're trying to clean up the Santo River, there's no reason to be pushing more trash into it. We tried to get him to get, we worked with Tex, what, a year ago?
Eight years.
They advised us how to do this, they said, do not push it off in there, if you keep pushing, you're gonna break that column out on the bridge. We tried telling them, and that had a lot to do with me leaving. You can't, take a horse to water, you can't make him drink. Instead of pushing it in there, you have to place it in, and instead of putting in all of this trash, or brick, or whatever, they advised us to put columns into the river like a half moon. They also advised, put rip rap around the columns on both sides. They said, put top saw over the top, seat it, walk away from it, you're done. But, that's what we get. My concern is, I'm downstream of all this trash, my father-in-law's concern is downstream. We've worked, he's worked for thirty years trying to get this place the way it is, and I don't want insulation, copper wiring, and all this other crap on our river, on our riverbed. Y'all knew what y'all need to do? I don't know. I mean, what, how can you fix, how can you fix it if they don't listen, they won't, they won't take your advice? You know what I mean? I've worked with Scott Humele, when I was supervisor, told Scott, I'm gonna do what I can, get that out of there. Hey Jeff, let's go up there and get this out of Scott's place, he's complaining about it. Well, we don't have time for it, I'm not gonna mess with that, that's, that's on the back burner. We, we're not gonna do it right now. We went to 277, tore that bridge down on 277 and Gillette. All of that material was already taken to Walker's Crossing Bridge, for the purpose of placing it in the river, and putting rip rap in there to get this done. He said, those are ready for a year, it's been there twice, but this is the first time it's gotten used over there, the first time it sat there for a month, then it sat up here at the 123 and business bypass, I don't know how long it sat there. It's, I don't know if it's miscommunication, or his way, but either way, it's not working. You know, we need to do something about this, 'cause precinct two looks good on the roads, come back on our side of the county.
Yeah.
Correct?
Yes, sir.
More than one part of this county. I drove out, I just showed, today, we'll pick up some men up with Daniel here, look out the county, I think it was a month there, turn off their county road, you look down the middle of the county road, there's a base middle, grass, crease, where you drive, it's nice dirt, and holes. I mean, come on, something's gotta get done here. I'm sorry I had to do what I had to do to get this going, I asked him twice not to push that crap off in the river, and I got shunned off both times, and I'm done. So, y'all do what y'all have to do, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Robbie.
Thank you, Robbie, grab.
Eric Curry?
Hi, are you?
Good, you guys?
Good looking.
I just wanted to come up here, I apologize to the whole county for this whole disturbance, and everything that's caused you guys. I'm willing to work with Jeff and you guys to get this cleaned up, and get it taken care of.
Can I ask who you are?
I'm Eric Curry, I'm the owner of TEC Construction.
TEC Construction?
Yes, ma'am. I'm the contractor that's done, done it out there, and I'm willing to work with Jeff to get this taken care of, and, you know, I've offered to go out there, send the crew out there to clean up the debris and stuff, spread it out, clean it up, make sure it's clean, insulation, everything out of it, that way you guys can continue your project, 'cause it's gonna cost a fortune to haul it out of there, 'cause we're out of transport and it's all the way up to Segean in San Antonio, so, and he had showed up, and he came up, and we looked at it, and he showed me where to deliver it to, and we dropped it off there, and then I got a phone call from him to stop delivering, and, so my guys stopped delivering, and we just wanna help get it taken care of. What I do to the progress?
What exactly you willing to help the county with, you'll take your pickups up there, do you, will you take your own load, or do you want it kind of loaded?
We can discuss that, I mean, on the hallway, I didn't, we didn't even have a discussion really about that yet, I didn't know about anything about hallway, I just got called this morning that there was gonna be a meeting, and I was asked to attend, and I said, yes, I will, 'cause I, I wanted to come apologize, I've been hearing about it, you told me what's going on, and I know there's classes, and they've been calling you guys, complaining and stuff, and I apologized to everybody for it, and, you know, I didn't want this to happen or anything, my guys were supposed to be cleaning it, and apparently they weren't cleaning it good enough, so if there's any trash or anything, we're willing to go out there, remove the trash out of the bridge, and if you guys need it separated, whatever, I don't know if you guys are gonna put it in there, whatever you guys decide to, but we're willing to help you guys. The hallway, we can discuss that further time.
Well, thank you very much.
I wanted to ask you a question. If y'all was hauling that to a landfill in Segean in San Antonio, were they manifested?
They were, the asbestos here, we didn't equip, we didn't care before we entered the building.
So you have the analyticals and.
I have everything right here, sir.
Oh, analyticals, and chain of custody.
Well, if you, if you want that comment, please get his information, contact him.
I'm willing to, I mean, that's what I ask you all, if you're willing to run me, you can discuss outside, you get my phone number, we can discuss everything more, yeah.
Dr. Kimble?
My question is, definitions of clean, and I may be getting really pithy about this, but when you look at something clean, I wanna know what the definition clean is. Is it clean material, is it clean dirt, is it clean village? Because of what clean to me, I don't understand, 'cause I saw the material when it's hauled, and it was not what I consider clean at all. So that's my question upon that, 'cause if we're gonna go around getting this material from all the construction sites, it's gonna be happening, somebody needs to understand what the definition clean is, and what does that entail? That's my question, 'cause that would save a lot of headache for lots of people, okay? And I'm not grabbing anybody, I'm just saying, we have to just, we just can't assume, assumption really gets people lots of trouble and gets us here. This man just stepped up here, he's stepping up, you know, I think he kinda, well, knows the word clean, and it wasn't clean in all of his eyes either, in my opinion, from what he just said, 'cause he wants to help us out. Two, my question is, is that when we start going and asking people to transfer material from a construction site, isn't there an already bid made monetarily wise at a construction site to get this stuff all the way to the burners and being dumped? And if we are transferring that, where does that contract obligation go? Because material in my house is sitting from this dirt underneath here, it, I don't know where it was supposed to be dumped, but it got to my house. And then the dirt at, at the construction site of the high. And then the dirt at the construction site of the high school, this is in the district school district, when that construction was being done, that was out there too. So where was that supposed to be done by contract? And then Don Mager's by the high school was the same way. And I went to the high school and said, hey, it's being dumped. No, it's not. I said, yeah, it is because, sorry, I was in Don Mager's house when he had the green floor and the green floor is by my house. So I don't want the county in trouble. I'm not here to get the county in trouble, but we need to kind of step up and figure out if we're going to get stuff, just get it written, just get a contract, it's going to be not a handshake negotiation. We've got to step a little bit in our business ideas and get it documented now. I mean, I came from a world to get a document, every doggone thing breathe in to cover my rear and my patients' rears and my staff and everybody. And I, we just need to step up something. And I'm not here to blame, blame, poke fingers at anybody. I just think that we need to step up as a community in what we do and be responsible for our actions and our words and what we're doing with things. Okay? So I think we need to just be more particular about that stuff. Stuff in my house has been there since this dirt was moved from another Zax. It's been, and I've been told five, six times when we moved. I had Conoco when they were putting up well out there, and I had them with two funding rollers, ready to come with county trucks to go dump. Conoco finally had them there for four days and they had to move them all aside. So I just, if you're going to keep your word, keep your word on what you're going to do. That's the other question. Now, I wouldn't have to. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
And then the last one, Cheryl?
Good afternoon. I became aware of this Friday morning as I was listening to the radio. And so I thought, well, I'll just ride out there and see what's going on. And I have, I really just couldn't believe what I was seeing when I drove up and I, it saddened my heart that I saw all this debris alongside the road with rebar and glass and all kinds of stuff like that that was going to eventually go down into the river as where it was along the banks. And my first thought was, who can decide that it's okay to dump a hospital in the river? And I attend most of the commissioner's court meetings and I, I try to stay very current about what's going on in the county because I have a letter, I've lived here my whole life and I have a concern for it. As you know, we just got through, going through this rigorous thing with the railroad commissioner and T C Q and, and I know that you're trying to save money to take care of the county as best we can. But the old saying, it's sometimes it's easier to like ask forgiveness and ask permission. I, I think that in this case, I guess everybody could agree that maybe the communication should have been a little bit better and, and still. As I was over there looking at it the other day, there were two young guys that came over and everybody knows what's with crossing is just a legend. Everybody, everybody in the county has always gone out there and under the bridge and they just, I can see where they tagged and stuff. Two young guys came up and they were going to try to put a boat in. And where they were going to put that boat in, all you could see was a bunch of unknits. And we don't have a lot for our kids here anyway, but the river is a thing that I know the young boys allowed to explore when they go down there and stuff. My concern is, what are we leaving for our children? What are we doing? And so my main thing is, and I try to invite this, if I don't want it by me, why do I want to go put it by my neighbor? And so I think that that's something that needs to be looked at and, and maybe not just give power to one certain person to make that decision because it ultimately goes back on that person and it's a hard decision, you know, to, to do that. So I think maybe if it could have, did it come before commissioner's court? Did this issue come? Because, and if it did, I must have missed it, you know? So, and then that way, because we don't want to do anything that is, acts like that we don't know what we're doing down here. So those are my comments and I just hope that we'll be able to keep our river and safe and treat our neighbors the way we would like to be treated. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anybody else? Is that it? You need to sign up.
I have to sign.
You have to sign. I wasn't going to. That's fine.
Um, my question is, and a young man got up here to say that he's willing to help clean up, is your job site. Does that mean that he's going to put the bill for the cleanup? No. So that means the taxpayers are going to put, put the bill for cleanup.
Bernie, you got to talk it through to him.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
My other question is, with regards to that, you know, he's part of the problem. We need a third party in here to clean this up, not the people that caused it to start with. Even though it came from his side, whether he did or didn't know, it's his side. It's his job to know what went on to his side. And he should have known what was in those trucks that went out there. Doesn't matter how he got it out there, whatever. If it's hazardous waste, even if you send it to a landfill, you own it to infinity if it's hazardous waste. Yet we may have hazardous waste sitting out in our river, washing downstream, you know? You have papers? But are you sure 100% until we get all the testing in, or has all the testing been done, to know exactly what's in there?
I don't, I don't believe so. It's not 100% clean. I don't think anything is 100% clean.
But can you say 96.5%?
Yes.
See, so I just think we need a third party in here to clean it, to make sure that the people that were part of the problem to start with aren't the ones cleaning it up. Because who's going to supervise them? And ultimately, is the county taxpayer going to have to pay for this? Because the debris came from his side, whether he hauled it wherever, he still owns it and he should have to pay. He knew, his truck drivers knew. And I'm assuming he's DOT regulated. I don't know for sure. They knew better. They knew better than to put crap like that down. So what I think is that we need a third party in here to get it cleaned up and he should put the bill for it unless there's things that we don't know about with regards to this. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am.
Do you have my answer? It's going to cost to clean this up?
Cheryl, we were not aware that this was out there until, I guess, Mr. Busman called us, then it was reported to the San Antonio River Authority. And those are things we're going to have to figure out. We don't know. I guess my court can say that.
And a third party, that's what I want. That's what I spoke to Mr. Beatrix about today. And I want a third party to go up there and clean it up. Where the bill is going to go, where, that's going to, something we're going to discuss by the third party. Yes, I do agree because the road guys, they're road people. And it's, I went out there, I checked the grade on it and all, and it's just way too dangerous for these guys that are not equipped or don't have the experience taking stuff out of the side, the banks of the river. We do need a third party. For the bill go, well, that's going to be, we'll discuss that further, we could discuss that with the county attorney. But no, I, I want a third party to take that on. Somebody professional.
Are you in agreement with getting a third party to do that and do it correctly?
Don't say that we can't make a decision for it. So you're all agreeing to anything? You're just talking.
Right. I'm just talking, I'm just talking.
But a few, I mean, quite a few people are, I'm sure, would rather see the county out, laden roads, fixing roads, set up, trying to spend a month fixing the bridge, and you get a contractor come there and do it and be done with it two weeks and it's done right?
My question B, is he qualified to fix the bridge? And if so, does he have documentation that says how he's supposed to shore up the pylons? And again, is he qualified to do that? Can he sign off on that? Or is the county liable if he does it, if he does it wrong and the bridge collapses? Is the county liable? Because under the statute, you guys are supposed to hire a road engineer. And you've all been warned of that and you failed to do it for, I don't know, if you want to. But I think under the unit system, you're supposed to have a road engineer. And so my question B, is he qualified?
That's not on the agenda. We're here to discuss that.
I think it is. I think it's, we're in a discussion.
You didn't sign up to be heard. If you want to have a Jeff Bassin session, you can do it right on.
Well, it's nothing about Jeff. I think Jeff has a point.
Keep though. I'm not going to argue with Mr. Hall. But if you want to talk to Jeff, you're more than welcome to. If anybody has any questions, anything like that about the discarding of the debris, if there's the gentleman back there, if you want to get names and phone numbers, the San Antonio River Authority is here, we can let you know who we talked with, the T C Q. We've got to excavate it and we've got to fix it. And that's the end result of the story. We're going to have to figure it out somehow. Yes?
I have a question, but it's concerning how it pays for it, who's going to pay for it? Did we pass a $20,000 bond? Was it only for roads? It did not mention bridges?
I think it was just.
Because I don't remember.
Bond was for roads.
Only for roads?
Roads.
Okay. Because it would have been nice if there's road and bridges and some of that money. But this is going to cost the county money. I don't know who's going to pay, but it's, it's still going to cost them money.
Well, Mr. Hancock was gone all week last week. He was at his convention. So we're going to try to get with him tomorrow, try to figure out where we need to go, what we need to do. And the bottom line is, it's got to be cleaned up, it's got to be excavated. And that's per T C Q. So we can either excavate or get inside it. So we're going to excavate and we'll have to figure it out and have to get with Mr. Hancock and we'll have to let you know in a meeting what's going to happen or why. We don't know.
There was not that much stairs in that one area. I showed it to him where it's at and we excavated, we dug the test site to prove that there was nowhere else. It's in that one little area right there and it wasn't that much put in there. And we looked at it and we dug quite like 15 holes, I guess. Fourteen, something like that.
I think we did about 10.
It was like nine or 15.
Yeah. But anyway, it's all been tested and not just the bottom just cleaned up, that was on the edge there.
And that's some things that you might want to get with Mr. Hancock about. Figure out where we're going to start and where we're going to go, what we've got to do. Anything else?
Judge, on the way of repairing it, I asked a gentleman to be here today if he would like to speak on the, on the way to repair it. Y'all want to hear that?
We're doing the debris today. We keep getting off the agenda and I'm, you're going to get us, not that you're going to get us in trouble, we're going to get in trouble by keeping talking about things that aren't on here. And the decision being made, that turns into a violation and that's not healthy and that's not the only one either. You don't want to, you know, break one thing while you're trying to fix another. But if anybody wants to know who we're talking to or what we're doing, T C Q, Sarah, they're all, they're all present, they can all answer any questions anybody may have. And the next item on the agenda is to adjourn.
Make.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I'd like to hear it's 20.